Well, that's the joy of public office.
KBF baseball.
We've got a quorum.
Should be okay.
Yeah, we got a quorum, but these people be.
All right, I see it's seven oh one and we're gonna begin the meeting. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything to change or would like to add?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
John made the first motion to approve the agenda at hand.
I'll second it.
Jason seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, host name. Okay, uh, item two, we got a public comment and we do have a citizen that would like to have three minutes, so go ahead Paul.
All right, um, as a representative of the city of Groton, I went to the Heartland Consumer Energy, Energy. Heartland Energy, uh, conference today. One thing they talked about was daycare. And I know about a year ago Karen had talked about daycare facilities in Groton. I also know that tonight they're talking about transferring property over to the GDC for a play center. And I think that you guys should really take a look at whether or not we need a daycare facility in Groton as opposed to a play center. Um, there are grants, there's all kinds of opportunities out there for daycare facilities. Um, communities are looking for daycares. I know we have a lot of people in town that have in-home, but that's not the same as a licensed daycare like we used to have with Teddy Bear, Teddy Bear daycare. So I think tonight, you know, before transfer the property for, um, a play center, we should actually get a committee together and talk about what the community really needs. A play center or a daycare. And I think you guys really need, I mean, like over Madison and Lake Crystal Minnesota, this was the two that talked about today. They talked about daycare. Madison's building a brand new facility. Lake Crystal has a remodel facility. And, I mean, they have businesses lined up that it will definitely help you out with this. It's not a city deal, it's a community deal. So Madison community, Lake Crystal community, uh, they got behind, they had like a committee like a fourteen people to kind of come up with this plan. Plus underneath them, they have four committees also underneath them working on this to try to get their daycare facilities up and going. It's really a big process and there's lots of grants out there. Lake Crystal, she said they apply, um, every month, they get like seven thousand dollars a month grant applied to their daycare facility for, for, uh, uh, wages. So there's a lot of things at play. So my, my emphasis today is because I went to this meeting today about daycare, it's been talked about here in Groton about daycare, we really need to know where, where we want to go in the future. Play center or daycare? That's something that, you know, we need to talk about. And that needs to come up with a committee, not from the city council necessarily. It's just not city driven, but it is city supported as far as getting people involved on the committee. So that's my three minute speech about, you know, where is Groton going? Do we need, do we need a daycare facility? Has that question actually been asked? And answered? And if not, then we need to look at that before we look at a play center.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so that's my three cents worth.
All right, thank you. Item three, city map update. I make Ken, go ahead.
Hey, how was, how was it going this evening?
Good, good.
Thing, uh, I know, um, Doug told me that you guys really only wanted to probably stick to the water map. So I did send it, but I sent this agreement back over or sent the agreement over based on the twelve thousand dollars we talked about. Kind of work on all the maps and work on, uh, bringing that stuff up to, uh, up in GIS. Uh, I guess from our standpoint, it would be nice to work off of this agreement instead of having to come back later on to do another agreement or something to upgrade those other maps. Uh, when we start on the process, if we're gonna, uh, convert this all over to GIS, I'll talk with our GIS person, it's gonna take a little bit more work than what we had kind of anticipated. So Mike, I know you'd work a lot with that. But when I talked with our GIS person, the initial thought was it's a drag and drop and it's all good. The, those particular maps are, they're not individual maps or individual drawings. They are one single drawing and every one of those maps, and you understand CAD, uh, is a separate layout in that drawing. So when you just take and move it into GIS, there's a lot of work to start separating that stuff out to create the individual maps. So I guess what we'd like to do is being as you want the water first and we talked about three thousand or thirty-five hundred dollars. This agreement is a time and materials, so it's basically by the hour and that's how we've done it in the past from when we started the maps originally back in, I don't remember how far that goes back, has to go back almost into the eighties or about the early nineties when we first built the map. And then we updated it every so many years or every year, you know, I needed it, uh, send us over Platts, we'd, uh, update the plat map and, and the base map, I guess is what it would be, the, uh, the regular plat map. And then the utilities over time and early that was just a hourly fee every other year, every year. So it's kind of what we're doing here. I guess, uh, if you, if you wanna do just the water map, I guess what we'd probably do is we'd probably update that for, I think we said three thousand, I don't remember exactly, thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, we'd probably just do that in CAD again and wouldn't upgrade it to a GIS at this point. Cause I hate to start on that, talking with our GIS person, I hate to start in that and kind of do something not, not gonna, not gonna be, there gonna be a lot more work down the road if we don't start out right. So I'd like to maintain that continuity. That doesn't necessarily mean we'd have to, we can do those other maps whenever you want those, but we'd just work up to the thirty-five hundred dollars and get that water map done.
Question I have, like, when you say it's, you know, the price is based on the standard hourly rates. So with GIS conversion, the most expensive ones are gonna be the water and the wastewater because you have the different valves and the different specific items to be updated the attributes for, you know, like when it's installed, it definitely.
Yeah, no, I mean, all of those, all of those, that line work, a lot of it is on separate layers, so somebody's gonna have to go through and filter out the layers, filter out some of, there's also layers in there that are kind of like construction layers. You don't actually see that line work where it doesn't, uh, doesn't plot, but a lot of that stuff is gonna take time to, to actually separate it. And then our GIS person did, like I was saying, he took the, the CAD map and drug it, dropped it into GIS and it ended up somewhere on the other side of the world. So that, I don't know if it's gonna need to actually have some survey to try and tie it down that I don't, I think we can do it in the office without actually having to try to do something like that, uh, what I referred to, and I'm no expert at this at all. April has more experience than I do at it, but it's the geospatial reference. It doesn't really have a geospatial reference to it.
It's just kind of getting the groundwork, cause I think with the CAD drawing, we've brought it over from version to version to version too. So the corruption of layers, the way we cleaned it up will be effort. Once we get it all in there, you know, then it's just a, once we get it entered, it's just a yearly update of information provided by you guys or a project or something, but it's building that base.
Right, but that's kind of what we talked about earlier is if, it was that same GIS, depending upon how far you folks wanna go or if you want somebody else to carry that. I know the county would like to have, they've already asked about getting the utility maps and stuff. Uh, Scott Bader, for instance, yeah, he's got the city map and they probably have a more updated city map than we even do because they get Platts and stuff. Uh, we haven't gotten any local Platts lately from the city to update that, but one thing he commented about was if there's utilities there, when somebody comes for a permit or whatever, he doesn't know if there's a utility there and, and whether there might be an easement there because we don't show easements on our, our map. But they may have that there. If there's no easement shown, the utility might reference that. That was kind of one of his reasons for having that, so. Cause our, you know, if we, if we moved it to a GIS system, uh, we'd give it to the county. They, they've asked for it. I guess if, if you don't wanna give it to them, I guess we wouldn't give it to them, but I don't know why you wouldn't work with them. They provide, they provide a lot of information back to the city.
So when we, we, the estimate was, or the agreement was developed, I guess the hourly rates are on the back. I didn't notice that before I started asking my question. Um.
I mean, if it costs, if we have more time into the, into it, I mean, our cap is twelve thousand dollars. I, I, I would probably tell you we're gonna have more into it based on my conversation with our GIS person the other day.
For just the water or what?
No.
Well, to probably do all the maps, to do all the maps you see up there except the electric map.
Right.
Do you know what attributes that includes for, say, like a lift station or pump?
That's all the stuff that'd have to be worked out. I mean, cause a lot of that there, that CAD drawing really doesn't have attributes to it. I think what, if I might, yeah, there, no.
If it the as-built type aspect, so like what, what's the horsepower of the lift station?
All that is where we might show a lift station on the map is probably just a, a square reference, a node or it, not even a node. There's, there's no reference, no, it's not like you're getting it from survey data where you'd have some kind of a attribute to a, if I'm understanding correctly, like to assemble or something. We don't, it's, doesn't have, have anything like that.
Like then the, the as-built aspect, you know, if you have what it was, when it was installed.
Yeah, so somebody have to manually go in and put all the plate names and all that stuff.
That would all have to be built, yeah.
Do you have all that information?
We don't have the.
So you'd have to ask the city for all that information.
We, we wouldn't, I mean, we'd have to dig back through some of our old projects and I've worked on that city map over time myself and I've taken projects that we've done and I've, I've actually placed them in the, in the city map with the water map or the sewer map and then that, in that CAD drawing. Uh, they don't fit. When we survey it and we do those projects, that, they, that stuff fits, but when you lay it into that city map, that stuff don't fit, so you have to manipulate it to make it kind of fit the streets and whatever. So even though that map was drawn by plat from all of the Platts back when we generated, so the.
Kate, Ken, I'm sorry, when you say that map.
Uh, you know, I'm looking at, I think the one down on the corner is the, is the base, the city map.
This one, sanitary one?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think that one, which is, I'm gonna call that the base map. That is with all the platted property.
Okay.
Uh, when we built that base map, that was all drawn from Platts that we had gotten from the courthouse.
Okay.
And I could tell you that that puzzle doesn't fit together. All the city maps we drew, we did that exact same way. The puzzle doesn't fit together. When I say the puzzle doesn't fit together, when you start putting all those Platts together side by side, the way that they're recorded in the courthouse, from one end of the city to the other, they don't fit. So the drawing is somewhat schematic. The dimensions that you see on the plat typically on that base map are pretty much the platted information. But the line work, if you're gonna scale it, the line work on the drawing may not, if it's a hundred and fifty feet, that line work may not be a hundred and fifty feet or it may be longer just to try to fit inside those boundaries. So, and, and we typically have a note on it. That's not a legal document. As you know, Scott, I think you were here when that came into question several years ago, somebody came in and was questioning, you know, the, the limits and the boundaries and, uh, that's not a legal document. That's not a legal survey, uh, but it was all assembled based on the recorded Platts. So the base map would be the first thing that would, and, and everything else is tied to that. Uh, the water sewer, but like I said, Mike, you'd understand more. That is one single CAD drawing and everything is in that one drawing. They're not individual drawings as you see up there.
But you have like a, a master drawing that goes through the different layouts, so you probably just have a specific area.
Yeah, it's not even, it's not even XRef, it's, it's in one drawing with separate layout tabs. If you, if you, in CAD.
Yeah. I haven't done it for thirteen years, but I got an understanding of, the basic understanding, yeah.
Well. Yeah, you have your master drawing and then you got a tab which is like a window of that drawing and you manipulate the layers to what you wanna see there. So we have about five, six layout tabs in that one drawing. But when you bring it into GIS, it comes in as a single drawing and it, so it's a busy drawing. But if you want, we can redo the agreement, send it back over for three thousand five, thirty-five hundred, I think it was thirty-five hundred dollars.
That's what it is.
And, and we'll update just the water map. We'll just do it in CAD and it'll come back pretty close to what you got there.
So if we do that, what you're saying is down the road, it's probably gonna be more expensive for all the rest of the maps.
We, we're going through the same process.
Do you have any idea instead of that twelve, what the price would be or not really, you did?
No, I mean, I had put together, and I guess I didn't even show you April, I apologize, but I did kind of go through it with, well, you've probably seen the email I sent to, uh, uh,
Yeah.
Tanner yesterday and he looked through that, whether he really was able to digest it. I kind of caught him off guard. Uh, but it's basically, you know, what it might take for hours to do that and whether,
So.
I thought it was a little on the slim side, but we don't care if we go over. We still wanna provide a service to you folks.
Cause what I'm thinking too is like, once you get all this information into GIS, you have your maps, you can do all your map work, whatever, you can print out those views. But if you get more advanced with the technology, if you get people in the street department or the maintenance department and they want to take photos and it, you can print out reports for like maintenance purposes to check if you turned valves, you know, for the water system. You can store history in there. Like there's all kinds of information you can load into GIS and it's all clickable and available on a screen base as opposed to just being, you know, the physical paper copies will still be there. You can always print them out. But you can host all that data for the city in one website, basically. Um, versus us having, I went in our garage to find the original plans for the sanitary of the lagoons out there. We have nine boxes of Groton map projects over like the history of how long we've been the engineer. And I have to go open every box and sort through, you know what I mean? You get that information, that data posted on a map that's clickable and it can like sort information and print out and export that data. That would be better than me digging through the boxes.
Yep.
Oh, no, digging through boxes is good.
But you, you have that base with this, you know, with this price. You get that base and you can add it as you go if you want to.
So, so Tanner told me to get a host license is seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I don't even know, he didn't really know if there was much of an annual cost to that. And then you probably know, I think that goes into Esri, which is a host software, cloud-based.
It's seven hundred bucks.
And like seven hundred, seven hundred.
Then you have access.
It's seven hundred bucks. So then you have access, you can do the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then whatever softwares you guys get to use, which are typically like, uh, Art Pro or Art Geo Master.
GIS one, two, three, I think would be the one I would use.
But we can do some of that, and I think we talked about this before. If you were gonna move to GIS or your, your future maintenance people, maintenance people now start using it. Paul would probably be pretty good at that. Uh, you could bring, you know, and, and those guys could enter the information. We can provide, help you with that. It'd be more cost effective for you folks to have your maintenance people do it than us because, well, we'd just be damn expensive to do it. Most guys wouldn't, wouldn't do that.
And that was one of the things I was gonna mention on this agreement, to be very clear that the updating of the maps is AutoCAD.
That what?
It is in AutoCAD, so it's not in GIS. Like twelve thousand dollars wouldn't get my street done. So when, when they, the agreement here is to update those maps in AutoCAD, so you still won't have any attributes based on when the items were installed, exports of, um, flushing of the hydrants, whatever. Just so then you, you have preventative maintenance, um, out there. So it's just a, it's a printout. Like that's what you'll see.
Well, we can, we can move it to a GIS system, but it's, you're right, it is gonna move, you'll be printing out the maps, but it'll be from GIS, not from CAD.
Yeah, and if you guys did GIS, I guess saying it's more like a.
But, but, but you're right, all of that line work won't really have
No.
an attribute to, to tell you when it, what's that?
You can have a copy of that, I'm sorry. Can you give me a copy of what you wrote? The, the agreement, please.
Oh.
I'm proud of what you're saying, I think I.
Yeah, so if it, if, if, like, we would have you guys do the GIS, it would be a quarter to three hundred and fifty dollars.
No, this is supposed to be for us transferring it over. Cause it doesn't say that in here. So we, yeah, we will provide, the council before, we will provide the printouts, but they will be from GIS. We will print them from GIS going forward, not CAD. And the space price is to let you know, like, it's a benefit to us too to put the information in our system as well. But we wanna have buy-in with you guys to move it over there and get continued information if you wanna use it. So this is for moving it into GIS. And then, um, we'll work at it at whatever this rate is for a while. It's not gonna be perfect right away.
But it won't have the, it, it, it'll have the, if I'm saying this right, and I'm, I'm probably, I'm way out of my wheelhouse. It will have that, that attribute there, but it won't have any, uh, information with it.
Yes.
Like, like you were saying.
The data dictionary is developed, but then users will have to.
That will all, that would be something that your, your people would have to go in and, and and I know Terry and Dwight have a lot of that information.
It gives you the blank setup of the.
It gives you the blank setup.
And then we can feed information into whatever way you want to going forward, but we will create the base for this price.
But it'll always be there. So like I said, I, I hate to go and just do the water map and if we don't start with that base map and get that stuff all in the right spot.
Jesse?
And, and we can complete that other stuff whenever, but if you want, you want a budget for, for that for next year or whatever, uh, we'll just put that water map together.
I don't know what to think. What do you guys think?
The big thing that I have, um, is ensuring we have someone within the city that can go through and, and update it. And kind of like when I was talking before, we, we also use this for like our, our property items, you know, and I have admin assistants that go around and collect the data. It's click a button, you, you put the information in there that you know. Um, so it's not real difficult in the fact, like if you know how to use a cellphone, you can do it. Um, but I need to ensure that we have the staff to do it, uh, to be proactive in the future. Um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna recommend going forward and doing it if it's just gonna be there and nothing done with it. Or else updating a couple lines based on the current map will cost fifty bucks because the design already had to be done.
But we're, we're moving a lot of the projects to GIS, cause just everything's going that way anymore, so.
So no matter which way you look at it, it's twelve grand to get the maps and you're still gonna move it over to GIS, is what we're saying?
Only, well, we won't. If we're just doing the water map, we can still do it that way. Uh, not the end of the world, but most, most everything, what I'm getting at, most everything that uh, is being done anymore is moving towards a GIS format. And you may use it, you may not use it, uh. Nice, nice, sounds like it's updated though. And you, you don't, you don't need to decide tonight, uh, cause quite honestly, we've, for full disclosure, we can't start right away anyhow. We've just, we're small, field construction season freezes up.
I can come back to at some point, bring my laptop and just kind of show you what you can click on, like what the features are and stuff, if that would be helpful, you know, but, um, it'd be better if we had like a projector or something, or I could put it up on the TV. Yeah.
Hmm, just connect. If you get, what is it, AC and LiCor?
Yeah, yeah, and I can do that and then we can kind of go through it, like, right now on one of the projects that we're working in, cause, uh, Mike, you were talking about survey one, two, three, we're using field maps and while we're doing construction in that community, every service that we're installing, we're taking a picture of the service. So we have the location, so you can click on it. You can see when you're out in the field, if you have a break, you know right where it's at relative to the tree, the hydrant, the wherever. Um, it's stored in the map, so you can click on it, you can pull that up. We're also using it to hold all the information for this construction project of every tree that we've removed, so we can show what it looked like before, what it looked like when we're done with the condition. You know, it's just a database on top of the printable stuff.
One of the things that we did touch on, cause we have a lot of sewer cameraing that's been done today, we can just, we can put the file in there so then someone could click on it and see.
The condition of the pipe, yeah. Yeah, it, it just folds all kinds of stuff.
Right.
So I can come back, you know, if we wanna do a, a different meeting outside of a council meeting or whatever, I can give a presentation on that too, so you guys have a better idea of the capabilities.
But it's like, it's, you're kind of on the right path there, Mike, and I've seen this in the past. We've done, you know, stuff, well, we were wanting to do stuff, the, the higher technology and then we just kind of sit back and say, uh, it's all good, but we really got the personnel that'll wanna do that. It's tough to find maintenance people anymore, let alone maintenance people that are techie or lack of a better way of saying it, uh. Quite honestly, I wouldn't be as smart if I was, as I am, which is not very smart. If I wasn't working in the environment that I am, I would be struggling with cell phones, period, but I learned through us most. I learned through us mostes. The younger guy, the younger people come in and you just gotta, you just gotta absorb what they learn.
Be nice to have that information, like it's uh.
Okay.
Mike. I did text Jesse and it's something he doesn't remember right offhand, but he's interested in.
Yeah.
Jesse would be the guy, right?
Well, and that's more conversations that we have to have, um.
Yeah, and if you, you know, you you guys that are on the committee, uh, water sewer committee, uh, maybe we just could meet with you. I think it was at, it's you, Mike and and Kevin and it's like, uh.
Whatever works for you guys, you can.
Karen.
It's like Karen, yeah, it's like you and Kevin.
Yeah, but you know, we could do this, the the G I S aspect is is much greater than just the maps that we have up there. It's, it's where, a- and you can get uh information that's already readily available to the public. Um, we can bring those different layers on there and put them on top, so i- it's something that I I'm glad you came and we got some more clarification on these different items, because um just, just that is is nineteen ninety here, you know.
We we. I I like going to and looking at them now, that means I'd rather, I'd rather have paper.
But it's.
Well, here, you.
Yeah, but it's.
We we tell you, all of the communities I've worked in, there's you folks, the city council, the city here has always used those maps regularly, they've 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 liked them because they like what they've seen. When you folks are sitting around talking, you can at least point and and go up and look at what what somebody's Dwight or uh Terry are talking about, or Paul, um, I think very valid to have them up there, cause other communities I work in that don't have maps like this, that they kinda, I see they struggle, they just don't, they just don't grasp what they have.
This, this, we can picture what we have, and we can look, like Dwight or Terry can look and it, I I like that aspect, I'm, I shouldn't say I'm old, but I'm old school, where you see a lot of these people now on construction sites, they uh look it up, they look on their plans on their phones. I I would rather have a job trailer, open up the big set of plans, look at it, look at the detail, that's me.
I got a young fellow working with me right now on a couple of projects and they now got him tablets, all of our techs got tablets now. And I have a binder, one of these thick binders with all my paper in it.
I hear ya.
And and my plan strung out all over my office and he's got it all on his tablet, he's way ahead of me.
No, I I like flipping through it and going back and looking at the different pages inspections.
So, uh, I don't wanna, you know, probably, you guys got quite a bit to go through yet tonight, so I don't wanna drag this out, but uh, you guys think about how you wanna do that, A- A- April will come over and give you a little presentation, because she's got much more experience than I do, uh.
I think. Yeah. You'll have to discuss this, and that would be nice if you could show it, but it sounds like it's the way of the times that are coming, like you said.
Yeah, like I said, we've talked about this for several years, Terry and Dwight have asked about it, there are simpler systems out there. This would be a little bit more elaborate, or you need something that, you know, but I think if you got the right person and once it's set up, I don't think it's that difficult for that person to really put that stuff in.
Well, originally, we just thought we were just getting the maps for twelve K, but now this kinda opens a door, if we can actually get files.
See, that's what I thought too, I thought we were getting maps, but I didn't.
And.
No, cause, cause, cause Mike really triggered it when he asked him to get the CAD files.
Did you ask?
Well, I remember, yeah, I remember Mike talking about that.
And I got a new writer he was going, I.
Want to have that full, full travel
Yeah.
Information where he can get everything, which is good.
I believe we'll we'll have more into it by the time we get all those done. Granted, I'd love to say we could, we'd do it for, we'd get it done for twelve thousand dollars or less, it's by the hour, if we, if we got it done for half that, that's what we bill you, but I don't think we're gonna get it done for that. But we got a long haul.
Who's the senior, who who's the top dog here?
Uh.
Is she, are you?
I may or may not supervise him.
Is she, I she, I think heard is the word she's looking for.
Well, I was gonna say you guys, nah, but come on, people.
We're a team, we're all a team.
None of us are better than all of us.
I know, I know.
Yeah, we all have our.
I know, yeah, I'm, sometimes things take time. Well, then we need to discuss that and
Okay.
And we will let you know if we'd like to, and it would be nice for you to come back and
That's totally right.
Show us how this plays out, so.
And it might be good to get Terry and Dwight and probably Paul involved, and maybe your electrical person, Todd.
Yeah, so. Yeah, maybe, maybe one of the first uh meeting of the month where we have all the guys here.
Do you think of the next meeting?
Well.
Yeah.
I don't know if you'd wanna do something like that during a council meeting, I think we'd wanna do that on a, on a side.
Would we?
A side.
I would, I would do it on a side, uh.
Yeah, I I would recommend that.
They could get free line, we could answer a lot of questions.
Yeah, cause it could be a question and answer session that could go on for a while, and if it's something we wanted to do in our office, we it'd be better to probably come over here, but we could do it in our office too, if if that worked better. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be everybody at one time, it could be a, you know, a couple people at a time, if you wanted to do it that way.
Let let us discuss this, you know, you kinda caught me off guard a little bit too, I thought we were just going with maps, or you know.
No, I kinda, I kinda thought that we were gonna have more discussion about it, so, you know.
Yeah, I think table it until we get more uh from the city workers and maybe a demonstration.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're good with that, that's not a problem.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes we get hit with information and then we gotta decide, and then once we process it, that you 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 think of, maybe, you know, your your mind may be going, did we do the right thing? So, I, I, I don't know how to do the right thing, but maybe we, we didn't have time to think about this.
Because I can see what you wanna budget for it also.
Pardon me?
I can see you, you would want to budget for it, um. I bet.
Hope it's not that much.
Twelve thousand.
You don't have to budget for everything.
It's a little petty cash, not that much. No, let us do that, I think we'll table it and uh, you know, maybe April can come and talk to us about it, so the council can understand it a little bit better, but then meet also with Terry or Dwight and those guys at stake.
Maybe we, maybe maybe someone that would maybe be able to run it in the future, that'd be running it, that they would be the ones.
Well, you see, that's the thing.
Here's the community and then.
Yeah.
Jesse and those guys there.
Some of the guys you may wanna be discussing with may not be here, or, you know, I don't know, how how Dwight and Terry are.
Yeah. Yeah.
Being the ones that are gonna be.
Well, you'll have, you'll hopefully have new people coming in.
Yeah, yeah, we will.
We're all getting long in the tube.
We're all ready.
The last thing here.
Okay.
I don't know, like I said, it'll wanna take up a whole lot of time, I'm gonna try to make this one quick. Yeah, you know, April, April had me run all these copies because all these guys were gonna be here and there's not that many here, so.
We're not changing.
That's, that now, I did a nip, I did kind of some drawing to give you an idea, um. What you got there? There you go, Doug. Uh, I really don't, you know, this is really, so I got, I gotta qualify, this is really preliminary, oh, I'm sorry, Brian.
I had told him the thing.
Nick, you took and handed them away.
You handed yours all the way.
Yep, uh. Keep in mind, this is not ours, this is something that I acquired from the D O T design, and and I hate to be, I don't wanna be out ahead of them. Uh, so I'm kinda taking a liberty here by, you know, showing you the maps here, this, their their plans, their preliminary plans. This has to do with the sewer that they, they must, they talked to you about here a while back, and I would talk about, uh, and we're gonna do some widening.
Is this the point for that project or what's happening?
Is this the twenty twenty nine project? It's actually, uh, I went to the brief STIP, they had a preliminary STIP meeting at uh N E C O R. And I went to that and when we were leaving, I asked one of the D O T representatives when this might come, it was probably gonna be more like twenty thirty.
Okay.
If it even, even if it hap- if it even happens.
Do you mind me asking who the representative was, because when, I deal with people, I like to know who, not.
I I I asked Mark Peterson.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, it was after the meeting, and you know, it was a real brief conversation, so like I said, I I hate to I hate to be out in front of the D O T, cause I believe they're going to set up a meeting to come and talk to you, so.
Yeah, cause nobody's really officially talked to us.
No, they're supposed to be.
Well, they came and and they came and they met with, uh, there was four of them that came and met with, with, met with Dwight and
Something Terry or something.
I don't even know if Terry was part of that, I think maybe uh Paul was, uh. And I don't know who else, I actually have a list of who was at the meeting, but it was really, most, I think it was just Dwight for the most part, uh. I don't know who else, so I apologize for not bringing that list with me, but.
That's fine.
Um, that was kind of just a, I think, an introduction meeting.
Okay.
Uh, I would think the D O T probably maybe expected some more people from the city. Uh, maybe wasn't coordinated well, I don't know what, how.
Yeah, I guess I, I, I do like.
I kinda got, I kinda got wind of it secondhand, so I started to chase it right away. So, here is their preliminary plans, and what I did is I went in and and the notes you see in black and yellow are just some of the notes that I made, okay? And I basically come up with what may need to be ha- may need to happen uh to relocate that existing sewer, and it's real hard to see. Uh, if you look at plan sheet eighteen of forty seven, you can kinda see where the sewer line comes and crosses on the right hand side of the page, you can kinda see where the sewer line comes and it crosses uh the two big pipe under highway twelve. And then you could see where I come to that first manhole, proposed manhole, well, that sewer, if you follow it real close, goes under their proposed curb and gutter. Okay, and there's manholes in there, I show, where I show uh abandoned existing manhole, that manhole is gonna fall right in their curb line. And I believe that's what they were talking about, uh, there's another one when you flip back to sheet fifteen, uh, fifteen, sixteen of fif- forty seven. Uh, there's another man uh manhole there that I talk about abandoning. And then pressure routing two hundred and sixty foot of of uh sewer main. So, the real trick here is, and I I generated a cost to relocate that, and basically here again, I want maybe to be careful, uh, because there's a lot of planning that has to go in into this, and there'll be there'll be other stakeholders that I think um the city would prefer to visit with first, I'm not sure, the D O T may may be visiting with them also, and how they would want that utility placed, I don't know any of that, I haven't had any of that conversation with the D O T. And keep in mind, this is a long ways down the road, but it's something you wanna start thinking about now. Uh, because that first sheet there is basically the cost that I had figured to do, to do that.
Today's cost.
Yep.
And the cost in yellow.
Yep.
Uh, six hundred and seventy thousand, and that would be based on prices that we kind of had the last year or so. Uh, as we move forward in the future, that's probably going to increase by whatever construction costs affect that, or whatever inflation affects that. So here's the caveat to that, which I'm a little bit in the back of my mind still concerned about, is if you go back to sheet eighteen of forty seven, there's, they're stopping the sidewalk in the curb and gutter right there where I have showing the new sewer jogging off, tying into the old and jogging off behind the right wing, okay? So, oh, go to, I apologize, go to eighteen of forty seven.
Fifteen.
Go right in here. The black line is the new, the black notes and the black line is the new sewer that I've and I, and I did that just to come up with some footages, so I could estimate what it's gonna take. So there's nothing cast in stone, it's pretty preliminary, uh. If you look right there, uh, at about station, I guess, one forty where they're ending the sidewalk and the curb and gutter that they're proposing. I'm going to guess that they may continue to take that sidewalk and curb and gutter. And it's probably just not on their drawings yet. I think they're going to probably take that sidewalk to the intersection. If they take the sidewalk to the intersection, we're gonna have to replace the gravity sewer underneath the, that are underneath those cross pipe. So, if you look at option B there, I have not calculated any, made any, calculated any costs to do that. That would be another option, and that would be basically installing new gravity sewer through that slough or through, is it west ditch drainage? Um, and I'd have to, I'd have to really go back and look at those costs, if you had to do that. So, the reason I kinda put the other cost here in that in this table of costs, which would be table E three dash one B. Uh, that's the handling lift station, collection system rehabilitation. That's from the study that we did, and that was one of the alternatives that we looked at to take care of that manhole that's right in the corner of the intersection and that sewer up there and 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 if that, if I remember right, that amounted to a lift station, we did a couple of different options there. Uh, Dwight and I came up with a couple of different plans, but that would be to add another lift station up there. So if you had to do that, you'd be looking at that one point three million dollars also.
So with these tables, what's E one one?
But if, here, I use the same, uh, E one one is all of those alternatives that we had from our original uh, a report update that we just went through here this past six months or so. And those are all those costs, I just used that same format, I used the same uh spreadsheet and created another alternative. Because if you were gonna go in for funding, we would have to do an update to that report. So I just kinda followed through with uh what April had put together in her report, so what you did, what you would've seen in the report was we had stopped at alternative seven. I created the alternative eight for this, uh, this sewer we're talking about here. But that'd be, that'd be something that we have to do, if you went in, decided to get some funding for that, we would have to do another updated facility plan. So all the other ones you see there, Mike, are the ones from the report. I just expanded on that.
And then table three one.
And and actually, the E, the E uh point three dash one were the alternatives that were selected for the current project we have. And I think, yeah, I did list that, that, that with the current project. And I think, yeah, I did list that, that, that with the current project.
Yeah, so they just correspond with the facility plan update that we use to get funding from D and R for the rehabilitation course, right?
Yeah.
So it's just a snippet of that section, basically condensed down.
That's why I hate paper. If I had this electronic, I would already have the, the presentation.
You gotta charge them things. Mike, you don't look like a boomer.
Yeah, alright.
So, you know, and if you wanted to plan, uh, something here or plant something out more and have more discussion, I'd, I'd recommend kinda back to your committees on the water and sewer or however you wanna do that. You guys got committee members to do, take care of that. Um, and like I said, this is a long ways off where we're very preliminary, but like I said, I don't wanna get too far out of the head of the DOT. They're, they're the folks that at some point will be coming to visit with you.
Well, we've got other things with them with regards to agreement, maintenance agreements that may or may not be in place for facilities that are, should be their property. So we got other things to talk with Mark about. Um, was, cause this was the twenty twenty nine plan. Was that the, the STIP meeting?
I think originally, but like I said, he, he mentioned it's like gonna be twenty thirty.
Was that already happened?
No, they've, um, they're in the process of doing the twenty six to twenty nine plan. But this project looks like it's already been pushed back past twenty nine.
Yeah.
So it's no longer on that agenda?
Yeah, I'm gonna, eh, eh, there's STIP meetings coming up.
Okay.
It was today.
Was it today? I was gonna say, I was gonna look at the data.
And yesterday did some live ones.
It was close.
They have, they have their, they have a STIP meeting today, was?
Yeah, well, yes. Thursday.
Today it was. They had one today and they have one Thursday at seventy.
Okay, and that's an online thing and I was, I didn't, uh, didn't check in on that.
But they had, the one that Ken went to was at the NECOG building and it was like a courtesy preliminary one usually for just NECOG stuff.
Yeah. And, and Shane from our soup balls office, he went to the one in Watertown. They have a, a first district there, which is like NECOG planning district. Um, and it's kind of a preliminary for those guys, uh, so they can kinda think about what might affect their budget.
Design still in December of the winter for our wastewater project?
Is.
Yes.
Started design still, it just been December.
I mean, we're, I dug up the plans, I mean.
We're, we're, we're already starting to think about how we're gonna attack that thing. But it's in the works. In fact, we were gonna try to get over here today and try to maybe get with Dwight a little bit, but that didn't pan out. We didn't think it was probably good to wander around in the rain, so.
And part of that aspect was, you know, if the bids did come in low, like, I don't know, where, are, are they posted on like Quest or something?
Yeah, we posted on that, when we get there.
When, when we, uh.
So like when we talked before about the actual funding, so if it came in lower than potentially or more than likely, our grant would be decreased and loan would stay the same. So have option items that you would be able to select potentially with change orders or, or more expensive. It could be a, an opportunity to have as an option.
We can't add on this work to the fun work because we didn't do environmentals or have it in our original scope for that funding package.
That'd be a whole different avenue.
So it would have to be totally different.
And, and I would tell you if we wanted to somehow package that together, they would make you reapply during the whole funding process. Let me try to. I had that happen to me, uh, on another project, whereas I rescoped the project and they made them go back in for funding. So that's why this would be definitely a separate thing. Or if you just decide to re-scope now, everything. And I'm not making that recommendation, I guess.
Good news.
Uh, last thing, Brian. Uh, and I don't know, this is back to this street project, uh, I don't know if we wanna delve into this. This was another thing you guys talked about. I did look into the cost and granted, I, I've not totally finalized this. I dug into this here late today, so I didn't get as far along as I did. I don't remember what I told you last time, but I kinda think you're gonna be somewhere in the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more dependent upon. As I got to looking at this, I give Terry an estimate to do that, but it was not, it did not include excavating out the whole street. What Terry talked about was maybe just trying to shape the in-place gravel, add curb and then trying to pave it. Uh, so I didn't figure any of the base course, the, doing the street the way we normally have done all the other streets. I would say if that was gonna happen, it's gonna be closer to a million dollars to do this street.
There's a block.
On the west side over there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, that's Ford and, uh, must be Washington and Lincoln. There are pretty bad streets over there anyway. I mean, in the springtime, it gets pretty wet.
That's pretty.
They get pretty soft, yeah.
So they should be overestimated, refabricated and so on.
In your pool room.
If we do decide to do something else.
And what did Terry say?
What's that?
What did Terry say? He just like to?
Well, when we talked about it before, eh, back in twenty four, I think it was, what Terry thought was maybe we could do is just go in and put curb and gutter in
Okay.
and reshape the gravel that's in place.
Okay.
Uh, as I look at this, and, and here again, I, I should probably circle back with Terry exactly on that because as I looked at this, my estimate here, um, I was missing some things and some quantities that didn't seem right if we were going to rebuild the whole street like we normally have in the past where we,
Yeah, we're, we're, we're.
we dig them all out, we put in fifteen inches, put in.
Put down the man. What did we always put down? Twelve, fifteen, eighteen?
Fifteen inches. You guys got the best section that I've ever built in like forty years.
No, no, we got good luck with those streets.
Does this million include curb and gutter or is that, uh, road, it's not, not curb and gutter? The one million, does that include, uh, curb and gutter?
Well, this, this here, this here includes curb and gutter.
The seven hundred and fifty or seventy.
But just, yeah, seven hundred and, uh, well, s- what'd I say? Seven hundred and seventy five, I got seven hundred and sixty thousand roughly here, but, uh, that, what I see it is it doesn't include any base course in it, so that tells right there.
One million.
That was, that was what rings with me is the conversation I had with Terry was to try to reshape the in-place street. And, and that's some of the stuff that we had done in the past, uh, in the early days before we started building them with fifteen inches of gravel.
Right.
Now, do those streets maybe need that much? You know, those are design elements. We could cut that all back, but.
Well, I remember we were having a lot of problems with the west side. I mean, them roads were, there wasn't no bottom to them, so.
Always saw.
I, I kinda get it. Did we overkill? No, they're good.
I didn't, having to redo them in a few years.
Yeah.
I didn't bring a copy of this.
Well, what is, but can you show us that, Ken?
Yeah, you, I actually passed those around. You can have those.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't make a copy of this for everybody. I apologize. I printed this real quick and, uh, I'm not even certain that it's, I've got it up. I know the project is not. I don't wanna say high on your priority list, but, uh, it is something you folks did look at, might have looked at. Well, I'd rather do, like I said, meaning that you're here, I'd rather do this project than redo railroad.
Yeah.
That, that was my only concern. It's like.
You know, and if, if, I suppose if a guy did something like this and the roads didn't turn out, at least we, well, we have our curb gutter there at least to do something else or.
Well, they'll turn out. They'll turn out. If you go and redo, take it out, excavate, you put the, the gravel, the fabric in there, it'll hold up.
Well, I, I, I think I know what you're saying, Scott, and I can tell you that that has been done. Uh.
Where you tried to save a little money and, uh, didn't work.
The perfect example is, the perfect example is right on the, uh, west side of the baseball field. They went in, put in curb and gutter and did kind of some minimum, minimal base work and it didn't hold up. And, and when we did third avenue, we went in and dug that street out and, and did it the way we started doing all of the other streets and that's fifteen inches of base and three inches of asphalt. And the problem is, is you get into those streets that were done that way, kind of a, a minimum cost. And I'm not, uh, you know, promoting one way or the other, but then you gotta deal with the old fabric that's in there. Done it all.
Yeah, it's kinda damned if you try to save some money.
Isn't that, that's Ford right there, isn't it? Is this Ford?
Yeah, yep.
That was pretty nasty a few years back.
It was.
It's, not good.
Much as a guy would have liked to, uh, have done them all when we designed it all on the west side back in twenty, I looked, twenty twelve, we designed all those streets over there and, uh, would have been nice to do them all at that time.
Yeah.
But I understand it. They've been good projects though. Okay, uh, I think I've consumed enough of your time. I apologize, April, I told her not to talk all night.
No, it's okay. Well, you had it right over there, don't you?
Yeah, I know. You know, you folks got anything else anytime, so.
Just give us a holiday. No, and thank you guys for coming down. We appreciate it. Sorry we couldn't give you a little more talking time, but.
Totally.
Next time you come to put everything up on the board.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, this is a pretty long range project and, and like I said, if they decide to, I don't know, I can't believe they're not gonna take the sidewalk across the bridge and tie into the intersection because they're gonna have sidewalk on the east side of the intersection also. They'll fill in that gap. Yeah, their plans are really pretty preliminary.
Mark was the supervisor, I'll talk to him. Mark was the supervisor.
Oh, okay.
I haven't heard any of them.
He's pretty good guy.
I don't know.
Hope so, Terry, you're.
Ken, Ken, with the DOT, if, if DOT does have a meeting with us, are you guys gonna be around for it too?
We should coordinate.
Well, we would like to. We would like to be part.
Okay.
Of that.
Okay, do you remember that though?
Yeah.
Okay.
So don't, don't show them that I drove on their plans. That video wasn't on either. No, I, I, like I said, I, I don't wanna be too far out ahead of those folks, uh.
Well, it's nice to have a little just idea, you know?
Yeah. That's what's coming, so you can, well, you were the one that, uh, said, uh, how we doing on future planning, so just trying to stay on top of that. Alright, thanks guys.
Alright, thank you. Thanks, April.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't pour or open sealed bids for baseball concession and the bathrooms building project. How many do we have?
I'll make it quick. I already opened them, so I'm just gonna start hitting it.
Hit it.
Alright. I didn't open them before this meeting. I just opened them while we're sitting here, just to clarify that.
Soon, yeah.
Uh, this first one's from RigNet Construction. Uh, this would be for twenty eight by forty two new construction, building the wall, setting the trusses, building overhangs, adding tin to the roof and sidewalls, dairy board to be installed in bathrooms and kitchens, sheet rock to be installed in the pantry and office, plywood to be installed in the equipment room, and setting and trimming all doors in the baseboard, uh, with a concrete slab, twenty eight by forty two includes concrete rebar and labor and concrete sidewalk, total square foot of concrete, co- total square feet of concrete to a hundred and sixty feet, five foot wide, concrete included. Total bid is ninety thousand, six hundred and one dollars and eighty cents. Ninety, six oh one, eighty cents. With a five-year warranty. You good? Next one's blocker construction. Uh, build concession stand, walls, sheeting, windows, walk it, walk doors, install steel on roof and outside walls, OSB, sheet rock on ceiling and FRP on walls, tape, texture and paint. Structure itself was thirty nine thousand, eighty one dollars and seventy cents plus concrete, looks like, um, through CWF concrete. Uh, and that would be thirty five thousand, nine hundred and twenty two dollars and fifty one cents uh, for that same five-foot sidewalk around the building with a four-inch thickened edge slab, two-inch foam under sidewalk for frost protection.
What was blocker's base price?
Uh, blocker's base.
Thirty nine what?
Thirty nine, eighty one and seventy cents.
Zero, eighty one, seventy?
Yep.
Okay.
And then with the concrete on top, uh, that was the thirty five, nine, twenty two, fifty one cents.
So that's what, seventy?
Fifty five thousand.
Seventy, seventy four thousand, eighty one, right?
That's another thousand.
Two, it was total.
Yeah, seventy five, yeah, yeah, I just lost seventy five.
Total.
Seventy.
Seventy five.
Thousand, four dollars and twenty one cents.
That would be the exact one if you want. Added an extra cent, come on in there. Seventy five thousand, four dollars and twenty one cents.
Say that again. It just said seventy five, zero, zero, four, one, two. Made it easier. Alright, thank you.
Alright. Next we got lock electric. Uh, the entire bid, which is, who was the stuff here? It's twelve thousand dollars flat.
For electrical?
Yep. I think I need to delve too deeply into the electrical specifics. We didn't have any competing ones there. This one's from SNS, I assume for materials. I did not necessarily bid that out, but I do understand them turning one in. Oh, jeez. But they're getting really close to where I cut. Sorry. Alright, so their total for materials, uh, is fifty four thousand, eight hundred and twenty two dollars and seventy eight cents.
How many?
Fifty t- four thousand, eight, five, four, eight, two, two, point, seven, eight. And that total estimate from materials allowances for cabinets, countertops and shelving are provided for budget figuring only, no design to establish final pricing. Like I said, I didn't necessarily ask for materials, but. Next one's Allied for the cooler. Uh, total bid on, includes material and labor to install a evaporator and condensing unit for walk-in cooler, excludes any line voltage. That total, um, is twelve, eight, sixty three, point, two, nine.
So what is, walk-in cooler as well as HVAC?
Yeah, he'll have, he has multiple.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
They're all separate.
Oh.
What was the price on that one?
Uh.
Twelve, eight, six, three, twenty nine.
This one is for the plumbing from Allied.
That first one was electrical, right?
That first one was for the walk-in cooler.
Is it core? Okay, okay.
So that's under HVAC?
Yep. Um, this one is the, as I said, the plumbing, uh, plumbing hardware fixtures, piping, water heater, bottle fill system, uh, twenty one, four, twenty eight, point, six, one. Next one, Allied for the in-floor heat. Get some out of there. In-floor heat is six, five, three, zero, point, six, two. Uh next one, Allied for the mini splits, so for the rest of the HVAC.
What's this though?
This is for the mini splits, so it's listed, yep.
Air conditioning?
Allied? Okay.
And this is twenty, nine, one, eight, point four one.
And that was for what though?
This would be for the mini splits, which would be
Air conditioning, very much.
Thank you.
Like you see in the hotels, in the wall.
And the final bid from Bar Spray Foam. Uh these are all different ones, I presume?
They're all the same in case you wanted to pass on.
Oh, gotcha, okay, uh bid for the spray foam, um fifteen thousand, fifteen, six, thirty six and sixty cents.
But there's like
Four different options?
There's options on there.
Okay.
Okay, who's that first number?
So, hold on, there's options, uh option one would be the foam, the cooler with four inches of closed cell foam.
Hand them out.
Okay.
People create them.
That's, that's awesome, so thank you for making copies.
Okay. Yep.
You over there?
Yeah.
And here you go. Have you got them?
I added my
Got you, here, okay. That explains that better.
Basically, if you read number six first and then you look at option one, two and three.
So the structure didn't include any?
Structure didn't include any wood or
Like insulation?
Yeah.
I'm sure it did, I'm sure you'd get it, they'd get a rebate off of that, I don't know what that would be though, I mean, it's probably on S and S is out there.
Well, like the, the thing that's tricky for me right now is materials from S and S is fifty five thousand, but we've got a, a bid to build the entire building for thirty nine thousand.
See, that's what I mean, this bit kinda threw me off, I wasn't really, I didn't ask for materials in the bid, I just had it included with the specs itself for the people to spec out, so I assumed they would include their own materials in the bid. But I might be wrong. In my defense, I also didn't, I made the specs, but I didn't do the footwork talking to the contractors that came in, that was Jared, so not really sure what was said.
Yeah, Jared just gave me both forecasts, reminded me to get my bid in.
That's concrete and
I think from what I can see is we only have one that's competitive, which would be Blocker and Ringneck. And then everyone else just kinda, as they're all, I mean
Who did Blocker and Ringneck, did they do, was that just schedule one or was that?
Yeah, they just included, it it was all just structure.
Right, so there's no one else that had a structure with it?
No, those are the only one that we had competitive structural bits, everyone else just kinda bid individually.
So was yours, was yours, yours is standalone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so
With one of the other ones.
S and S must be separate to this. S and S would have to be added on to the total cost, right?
Cause what was it?
So I think this is just the building of the cause the whole project you could figure it out, it'd be over two hundred.
Two K, period of seventy one.
Yeah, it's a little over two hundred, yeah, somewhere in that realm, so yeah, I think it'll all work, it'll probably be
So S and S would be the material
So basically, S and S is material.
Is the material cost for either building, S and S?
And you have
So they're just the labor portion?
Yeah, you're making the frame.
So if you add
Makes more sense.
Yes, huh?
It makes more sense, yeah, so they're the only bid for material.
Yeah, but we didn't have a schedule for material.
No.
That's why I was trying to be pretty clear last time, but it was it was difficulty here, so fifty four plus ninety. And allied, but then don't put in the in-floor.
Just do the
What schedule was yours, Brian?
This would be
What was your?
You were gonna HVAC, weren't you?
You could put on another
HVAC
Your schedule two A.
I guess something like that.
Just lock.
Okay.
I can't remember what we did.
Cause one is That would be
Yeah.
Two oh nine without the in-floor and that doesn't include Brian's.
Portion either, that's where I have to worry, which was a past chat about
I think you just about want the walk-in cooler sprayed anymore, I mean, look at Apple Legions.
Are we buying the cooler or something?
No, that's the walk-in cooler, like you know what, they have that walk-in cooler, you stock it from behind. Them coolers, you just about wanna spray foam anymore because that fiberglass, you get too much, too much moisture traveling back and forth through the walls all the time, you start to get
With fiberglass?
Yeah, fiberglass.
So you wanna go with spray foam?
And the cooler's one hundred percent all the time.
So really the only bids that are beating is Blocker and Ringneck.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's kinda what I picked up on, I mean, everyone else is kinda through front, but my worry, and Chad maybe verified, is that council members are limited by grand, usually or for the block, for what they can receive. So I don't know the exact word.
For what?
I think he, he kinda knows what I'm putting down, uh it's a state limitation on, on council persons, we had an issue, this guy brought up a year, a couple of years back when we had a, an HVAC issue here. Um we allowed it to go, we we were able to get it to go through under an emergency circumstance and that's how Kevin was able to
Oh, for conditioning?
Do our air conditioning without getting into any sort of
Yep.
Trouble, um however, I'm wondering if this is a similar situation, he's the only one that bid any of it out.
But he's the only responsive, he's the only responsive bidder for the schedules, so
For what, uh
Right. So if that
Schedule what?
He's not a, he's not voting for the HVAC schedule.
That was my only concern, likewise with yourself as well. Wow, that above five thousand level just
I can't vote for that, I can't vote for my bid.
No, you can't.
I can't, I can't vote for me.
But I, I think it would be good to just ensure clarification on the bids that they didn't include materials.
Yeah, I'm a little confused on that too. So Blocker and Ringneck is labor only, their bids, so
With concrete.
You should, yeah.
Yeah, the, the way it's
Materials for concrete, but everything else is just labor.
Yep.
S and S bid the labor, or bid the materials.
S and S bid the, material for
So this
Did Ringneck bid it separate though, his is just one, or did he?
Uh he did concrete different than concession stand building, I do not believe this includes material.
I didn't, next
I'm getting clarification.
Well, the way that this one's worded, it's all build walls, installs trusses, install the sheeting, install the windows, install the wall, it, it's, it's labor, right, no furnish.
Not support. Yeah.
It's install, not furnish.
It's labor.
No furnish?
Hmm.
Okay.
Cover this with steel.
I think the only, I mean, of course, this one includes materials, electric, but
I can give you Ringneck answer at least, uh concrete is included but not material for the building, S and S did not have the material listed together, when I put that bid together
There we go.
It was just the build with concrete.
Okay, so that's what I've announced.
Yeah.
And Blocker's thirty five K, which would be with concrete, so yeah, makes sense.
Kind of, so now we're at uh a little bit of a crossroads, right?
Yeah, it's Brian's.
Cause we've got three.
Well, we have one we can't confirm at all, so I think we'll have a quorum, that's Bri- that's Brian Vax, pastor, abstaining for the Barca aspect of it, but everyone else I think we could try to, if we're on it.
Do we have, I know we have it. Is that what they provided in their original, that's the specs?
This is our specs and
Doesn't matter.
Kevin would be here too, if you guys both can follow up, we'd almost be here.
Yeah, I could vote for Kevin.
Yeah, you can vice versa.
Yeah, you can vote for
And Kevin could vote for me.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah.
Kinda need Karen here.
We all want some Karen under this.
Too late to call it now, I don't think I have any.
What was uh, uh as far as, like on Kevin's bid, were they gonna use spray foam or?
No, he, he was just inst- that's, that's just his children part of it. So that was just his material.
He was just fiberglass.
No, he, he
No, that was just his stuff, no, no insulation.
His, his install for his equipment, there was no, it's like he's not gonna build the walls for it, he's not gonna put the insulation in it either.
But his includes materials.
His included, yeah, hi- his, his equipment for, yep.
Yep.
And spray foam was written as the preferred, cause mold and all the other issues associated with that.
Yeah, there's a lot of problems with walk-in coolers with fiberglass.
Which is Definitely interesting.
And I will say, does your bid include materials?
Mine does.
They're also in this one too.
You can submit it, you can subtract it from it.
So the, there's some of that too, that would probably change their material list too, depending on who's providing what.
For S and S, you're right.
Yeah.
It may drop that
Did you cut that? Or did you pull that out of your bag?
They licked and sticked it too close to the top, my bad.
Those are just
I'm saying you're, you're probably gonna get a credit from insulation, probably for about four grand from the lumberyard for everything, but then you add my part into it.
Plus a date.
And it's gonna be obviously more than four grand because spray foam's it's more expensive, but it speaks for itself. I mean, it's just a good product.
Yeah, I can see that with fiberglass, probably don't need that all around.
Well, not, yeah, there's just, there's just too much of a vapor barrier coming through the whole cooler all the time, it's just you're, you're
It's not good.
The plywood starts rotting out on those walls and, yeah, it, it causes black mold, I mean, you know. Legions is pretty bad.
I was just gonna say, that uh example.
That wasn't, that would be an example, yeah, and that was what, twenty four years old, twenty three years old, something like that, maybe, maybe a little longer than that, maybe it's twenty five, twenty six years old, but
That actually, they're just regular insulation or something.
Yeah, they, they just break the insulation in it.
I am gonna also add that Ringneck did include a five year warranty, I didn't, I do not know if Blocker did.
Blocker doesn't specify.
That's the tricky thing with evaluating the bids, if it's not scoped.
So for Kevin's portion, Allied, are we, are we okay with that, you think? I mean, he was like
For what?
For Kevin, for Allied.
If he's
For accepting the bid?
Yeah.
If he's the only one, it's really what, I mean
Did we not get information from the baseball when they came and presented on it?
Yeah, we
Or was it just talk, cause I can't find anything on
What's that?
On the amount.
For what?
For when Jared came in and talked about, when we established the bid opening and everything.
Yeah, it's
I thought it was like two seventy.
No, it was
Well, kinda, I, I thought we
I don't think we got
No, that was under two fifty.
Was it?
Yeah.
Because with the different request, then there was a request for the additional thirty five thousand from the city for next year to pay for this bid, or this project.
Yeah, cause they were looking at two, if I remember, it was either two forty, two fifty, but it was, I think he had the piece of paper with him.
Hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah. But if it was under that, then obviously we would not have the budget for that.
Yeah, cause I don't have, I might have some on the computer, some
I have an older document, I think I
To, I don't know if he's had updated figures or anything from since then.
There might have been an email to it.
Baseball discussion, so May twenty
Cause I think it was, the coolers was, was the, the extra expense at the time and
Yeah, the cooler and the radiant heat and the floor, that's what we were
Yeah, we didn't do the heat because it's summer time.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that was listed as an option.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I think there was donated material for the, the heat and the, or for the flooring, I guess.
And that was in the quote that he received. But that's not associated with the bids we just got.
Do we have to make a decision on everything this meeting, or?
No, you have thirty days.
We have thirty days?
Thirty days from bid opening to a work ends.
So we could table it to the next meeting. Hopefully at that point, have a full console.
But there's no more bids though, right? Because
Now, a bit of a
Very well.
I, I think, I think maybe we should table everything until we get Kevin, Karen here, at least get by.
Yep, we, we should have them two here, that'd be nice, that's
Yep.
Cause we couldn't move forward on everything without them, so
Yeah, it
Correct, you're right.
You can, you can approve spray foam today.
Yeah, I make a, a motion to
You, you know, before we start this, you never made a motion to table item three.
Oh, no, we didn't have to table it, it was just a
Yeah, it was
It wasn't a decision, it was nothing.
We'll do it all, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table, um the review and approv- or the approval of the bids for tonight's uh baseball concession stand until next meeting.
Mike, bring the first motion, the table it.
I'll second that.
John's seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose the motion security.
Can you vote on that?
That would be a
Table it?
Yeah, a motion to table it, sure.
Yeah, it's because he has one of it, so
I'm not awarding anything.
Yeah.
Here you go.
Okay.
Okay, item five, transfer to South D O one oh five.
Alright, so uh here is the, I guess, the executive summary of the business plan for the Groton Development Corporation Activity Center. And to kinda touch on a little bit of the public's comments uh before about daycare center, before um we even had this um presented, we brought in all the daycare providers or we uh invited all the daycare providers that are in Groton to one of the meetings to talk about different challenges and opportunities and bring up this to see, get more of their input.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, um
How many showed up?
Uh let's say two.
Oh.
Two wanna work together, that was
Two that wanna work together, um
How many do we have in town?
I would say about six, six or seven.
Six. Six, one got it, I think, maybe. Three, right? And then we just got a new one that started again. And, you know, during that conversation, uh there was discussion about obtaining certification. And one of the things that we didn't wanna do as a Groton Development Corporation is to fight against businesses that are already here existing. We wanna help support the existing buildings before we come in and um like create a daycare center. This activity center could potentially become a daycare center, it's not for that now, but if the time came, there is opportunities to transform the current thing into like a, a daycare center. But the current proposal for the land transfer is for an entire activity center.
If you, you know, with, with that thought in mind, if this would go through, are you guys designing the same properly? So if it would change from your first intention to your next intention, would you have to gut the whole thing?
No.
Well, I'm just asking, you know, that
No, when we go through the design, so this would be the first phase in the aspect to get the commitment um for, you know, what is, maybe December of twenty twenty six if we're able to obtain the funding uh from the community, to have a commitment to hold that property for us. And you, and not do a transfer of the property, but to hold that property for us, and if we can't get that commitment, then I guess the city will get to keep mowing it for another twenty years. But at least here is what we're presenting to try to generate revenue for the, the businesses in town, potentially here is what we're presenting to try to generate revenue for the the businesses in town, potentially bring other businesses in town and also contribute to the other nonprofit organizations within the city of Groton, so it doesn't always go to the city council.
And provide services to the current daycares.
Right.
Because we'll be able to come utilize it, get little ones running out all their energy.
So how much is the cost for daycare to be a member?
I, so when we went through the initial startup and revenue projections, I didn't, where we didn't separate the membership for daycare at this point. Uh the memberships cost in in there, um like that hundred thousand dollars, the original number was four hundred dollars. So four hundred dollars is less than twenty bucks a month to be able to utilize um this facility all year round, temperature controlled, two hundred and fifty families, probably. So that was that aspect, uh parties, events, um. That was what the estimates were for. Originally, when the initial proposal, I think it was a hundred ninety-five thousand that we had, but that cost was um the same cost as what Somerset uh charges in in over by Rapid City. And we thought that that was a a high cost for um.
For, well, sorry.
For our location.
Full hundred dollars. A year is thirty-three dollars.
Oh.
A month.
Four thousand, maybe. Let me look at the.
At Somerset, that's kind of, that's kind of like a suburb of Rapid City too, so it's.
Rapid City. It's half the price of what theirs was.
Yeah, um depending on the number of kids, you can get a yearly pass, one child is four hundred and thirty-nine thou- or four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Five children is one thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars.
Thirteen hundred dollars a month, I'm just trying to go play at the park.
But in the middle of winter.
Go to skating park.
Resort farm.
Yeah.
Yep, resort farm, we're in South Dakota.
So then, like on here, I have the facility cost and other costs, so total revenue and total cost uh differential is about sixty thousand dollars a year. You know, and that's anticipating that if we can raise the money to build the building without having to have loans. And that's why there's a contingency in place, it's it's just a commitment for us to kick off a project. Um cause without the land, then that adds more complexities onto it, it's already in a commercial zone, um zoning won't have to change.
And this is just the land behind the community center?
Yep, that's been big.
Not including the jail, not including the jail.
We'll turn that into the timeout, timeout.
I don't want the jail.
What's that? That'll be the timeout room.
Yeah, there you go, that's a that's a that's a good one.
I've been in.
Well, you know, too, it should be nice to have Kevin and Karen here.
Yeah, that's why.
I I I I.
Did this last week.
Can or the next meeting, can we have a?
Can you tell me?
Really need to have.
We can table it again.
Are they?
Uh, okay.
Are they going to be here at the next meeting or is this going to be a kick number?
We need to have, you know, them.
We're, they're gonna have to because we're gonna be at the edge of our thirty days on these sealed bids.
They have to.
We.
And yeah, for sure, yeah.
Yeah. I'll see, what is, what is it?
At least one of them.
Yep. Yep.
We, so Mike, the thought is, is that the city makes a commitment to transfer the property contingent upon the development corporation raising money?
Raising the funding to build it.
And then the development corporation raises the funds, we transfer it, and then it's just um corporation's property.
Yep, so then in here it has a director manager and then director and manager can also assist with grant writing cause I know we presented on that uh to council before and that was denied, that there would be a shared uh grant writer amongst different organizations, so having uh someone that would be able to contribute time associated with grant writing not only um help serve the development corporation, but the other nonprofit organizations within the community, so.
Have you looked at other properties around town? I mean, if if that don't go through, I mean, is there other, I mean, it can't be just.
We.
If you don't get the land here, it's just, you throw your arms up and you you're done, I mean, have you looked enough elsewhere?
We. There have been some other properties discussed, um I won't go into specifics because some of them are kind of like.
A much.
Maybe not.
A much.
How much?
How do the other properties?
We haven't negotiated with any individuals.
Okay. Okay, I was just, you know.
Yeah. No, we, um, these would have been private properties that we would purchase or they would donate, but they, we also would have to start contending with uh zoning issues and other things like that, so this is a piece of property that is currently not being used, it is, it is an L shape, it is kind of awkward. It's also right next to the community center, right next to downtown, and it seems like a logical fit to have something that can benefit the community.
Well, I'm gonna throw this out there, you guys. And I know some of us have some mixed feelings about this, and you know, I kinda did too. Uh that, why should we do this? Well, uh it does just sit there, are we ever gonna build on it? I don't think so, I I mean, we got what we need, uh I get it, I I don't like letting go of something we do have in case we would, I don't think we ever will, and for us to not give these guys a shot uh you know, it's kinda like you you know, I I get it, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna, but you you should because it just sits there, this, and and I know some of us have different feelings, and I felt a little like that too but it's like, well, alright, you guys got some fire in your butts, let's see what happens, uh. So, I'm I'm just throwing that out there, and I know, I know it's hard to let things go, uh you know, but uh there it sits.
Here's.
It's like having that old car you're gonna fix up, it never gets fixed up, and there, or you know, certain things like that or what whatever, but uh if if we do have some some uh fire in these people and they wanna do it, well uh I I I guess, I I've thought about it long and hard, and my my opinion is, let's give them a shot. So, you guys take that as you want, I just wanted to throw that out there for the next meeting because we do need to get Kevin and Karen here for uh for bid, for bids. And I'd like them to be here for that too.
Well, they gotta be here, like I said, you gotta reduce yourself.
I would have to, sense I'm.
So, so. Yeah, but you can't vote on it today anyway.
The president. Right.
No, but a couple of things that I think we should be thinking about is, so if we approve it, we put it contingent upon the Groton Development Corporation doing financing, you should probably put a timeframe on it, tentatively, as the city council. And if you wanna extend that timeframe, right, we can always extend it, cause fundraising can take time.
Right.
But I think I think those are a couple of things you you should look at and say, hey, well if we do commit to it, we'll commit to it for a year. And if they don't get funding in a month ten, then they can come back and ask for extension or something.
And that's why when I put it that contingent on having the funding by December of twenty s- six, because if if it, if if we push this out
No.
as a development corporation and if community supports nil, then, you know, we did our best. We we submitted it in the Aberdeen Pitch and one of the professors um commented back that this would be a game changer for the community, um but.
Uh I would tend to agree, just as moving here at a time when my kids were still in daycare, uh there was no daycare in Groton. It was, it was, we had to wait our line for months and drive our kids up to Aberdeen for daycare because there was none in the community, so. And I know this isn't daycare.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, I know that, but maybe it would encourage en- en- support to daycare or encourage more people to create a daycare.
Well, we we sat in meetings looking for opportunities to grow this community too, and I mean, we're talking growth, obviously, by homes, but it's, the growth is in other areas too, so if you have these other avenues for people to come and it's attractive for the community, growth may occur naturally after that as well, so. I mean, we wanted to develop the corporations, I think you kinda have to, we have to support you guys too, so you wanna give you a chance.
Yeah, that that too, a little bit, we we fought for you guys or we, you know, so.
You know.
Can we do a donation, the city give them a donation, a healthy donation for support?
Ten thousand?
Well, you know, yeah, if possible, I mean, we we gotta, I guess, maybe we sound like
Yeah.
the old farts that don't wanna give up, so then we gotta move forward, just like a lot of this stuff we're seeing nowadays, everything is different and the opportunities are, maybe gotta grab it.
Well, I think it's, I think it's a great idea and everything, but what happens, like it's, it gets a lot of support for the first few years and now all of a sudden it it fizzles out and there, and you guys don't have the funding yet, you did, and and now the buildings you can't afford the building, so then it's supposed to go back to us, but then what do we do with, as a city, do do we, now now do we, the city is self-funding a daycare center?
No, I I.
It's not a daycare center though.
Well, if, like if if it didn't work out, like say that the grandest can go through.
Yeah.
Right. We, that, that, you know, and I get you, but but we can't, a lot of times, we can't, what if?
Yeah. I know, but.
I, what what if it does succeed and it's a, it's successful?
Yeah.
But if it don't, then we'll have to cross that bridge and maybe get there, I I don't know, so, that's a tough one, but if we don't
Well, the building's at its bottom.
start sticking our neck out a little bit, i- if you don't take a chance to move forward, we're gonna sit.
We already have a community center that's kinda aging too as well, so then.
No.
Yeah.
No, and and I get it, and I I I uh, it scares me, but if if we don't move forward, we're gonna be stagnant.
What if, kinda to alleviate that potentially in the contingencies, cause you have the dissolution clauses now, right? If the entire JDC goes away. GDC, sorry.
GDC, yes. We are grown.
Sure, of course.
Yeah. I said that last night, see.
Um, those were in the bylaws that are sent.
Yeah, but like in there, it could also, like, if the, if the funding was raised and there was the contingency where we have a a a pole barn sitting there that, if it's not used for the original intended purposes it could be transitioned to other services for the development corporation?
Well, you could do that, if the board, the council would have to vote on that.
Yeah, cause I don't know if that would potentially alleviate it. I don't know.
I mean, what?
Twenty thousand dollars in property taxes, but.
So if the building is paid for, then you look at, well, what's the next risk? You got a building that, the building's paid for, so, I mean, if the city was, also had to go in and there was two hundred thousand left to pay on the building, it'd be, then different, it'd be different, but how you get in a building, that's, I mean, if you guys get all the funding, yeah.
Right, but the city council's not in the position until the development corporation undertakes business?
No, no.
No.
So if you guys, if you guys can't continue to pay the property taxes on it, right, then then it just goes away, right?
Yeah, we would default on it, yeah. We would default on, or uh, we wouldn't.
It'd it'd, it would transfer back to the city's property and the.
It actually sold or whatever.
Right, and then you, you guys have probably already talked about daycare providers and they said that they're, they would utilize it and pay membership dues and as if people would pay dues, and you think that you could at least break in on it.
Yeah, and, so when we had this meeting, the daycare provider meeting, uh there's interested daycare providers that wanna come to town and or to to join together and to start with just their current clientele. Those were the only ones that ca- showed up at the meeting. And there is a, but they're having trouble finding a location, well, there's a location on Main Street that could potentially be utilized for that, but the only issue that they had and this was way after we thought about the activity center, but the only issue, one of the major issues that they had was there was no places for them to perform activities. Yeah.
Could could they use the community center for any of that stuff?
Uh, it's been brought up, but
Um, that would, I mean, there are things at the community center that would be a benefit, like it does have a kitchen
I can't.
So, yeah. Casey.
but it also is a giant room. Kids, unless you're telling them to run laps, they're not gonna be able to find a whole lot to play with there. So this would be dedicated to
Children.
giving kids an activity, and not just littles, it would be, um it could be all the way up to teenagers too. It's just a place to go that would be indoors that um they can play at all year round. And, I mean, the alternative, uh or if you all were to build something on there, I assume it would be an expansion of the community center, which would not only cost you all money, but I mean, you already have to pay, um, you're gonna have to pay for cost to upgrade or upkeep the current community center. We're not saying we're gonna run this as a business, we are a nonprofit, this is a way for the nonprofit to make money, to help other organizations, help other people in town, but it's not like you'd be handing it off to uh John Q Businessman who's just gonna tw- try to make a quick buck and leave.
No.
We're not in positions to leave, we are on this board because we wanna invest in the community.
Yep, I I I I like that, invest in the community, that's all we need to do. Uh see what these guys can do. So, but like I said, I'm, I guess I I had had a little doubt about it, but I thought about it and I thought, there it sits, ain't doing shit.
Wait till. Except for possibly more money to upkeep.
There it sits, you know, and so.
Or not a lot. Mow it, mow it minimal.
Let's see what you guys, let's see what you guys can do.
You need the sidewalks replaced, that's, i- if you wanna, if you wanna take that stance, um go walk on the sidewalks and someone trips and falls on the city property.
Yeah, I mean, it would technically be a liability if somebody did get injured on that property, I believe, but if you transferred it, we have a building and we would have the liability.
Yeah.
I think we already, we already talked about it last year about replacing the sidewalks anyway.
So, Karen.
Really? We were, so we talked about reciting the community center and.
That's.
Yeah.
Well, I think we gotta table this till next time anyway, because we don't have the quorum to make the vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, but uh.
But I think, I think some questions that I would have that Karen and Kevin should be, like how you came up with your revenue.
Yeah.
Then let's just talk about it next time.
Yeah.
And if you all come up with any additional questions, Mike or myself even can answer them before the meeting, during the next meeting, whatever you need. So, come up with some questions, we'll s- we'll try to stump them.
Alright, so, yeah, with the, with the pricing aspect I utilized the Somerset model for the kids, uh I think you just read it, a four hundred, um thirteen hundred for a family of five
For one child.
and what I used as the basis when we submitted before was eight hundred and fifty bucks. So, but I can, I've got that information on the spreadsheet.
And there are alternatives to buying a yearly pass as well, um.
Yeah, daily passes.
Monthly, um, there's, Somerset has a punch card as well, I mean, there are options like that.
I can break it down.
Okay. Uh, we got a little, we got, got a little bit more to think about, we seen this, uh and we need to have Kevin and Karen here, we need to have everybody here. So, we need to put the hammer down to all these guys, and I would like to.
Okay, I can.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna table item five, we need a motion to table item five till our next meeting.
I'll.
And uh, I'll just, yeah.
I'll make a motion to table item five.
John made first motion.
I'll second it.
Jason seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Second it.
I oppose, mate, motion's carried. Item six is our first reading, a board needs seven ninety. Item six is our first reading of ordinance seven ninety, could be in front of you.
Uh, I'll just quickly run over, there is one behind that, a little note, still be another one coming down the pike, um, with possibly some baseball stuff in there. Um, but I'd like to give it to the end of the season, the accounts are still sitting okay, um, softball, I can usually work some things around in the recreational budgets. Appropriation ordinance allows for that, given how broad the recreation portion is, um, I can usually fish out of the different baseball accounts and make them whole, but I would like to just give me the rest of the season to to make sure of that. Um, but these ones on here currently, the top one there, that's our roofing project, um, that's funded from essentially, um, I know it looks a little off down there in the source of funding. Um, that's how much we were given right off the bat from S D P A A, um, there will be more coming down when the project's complete to basically pay for the entirety of the project. Um, but that's what that first one is there with the general government buildings, that's for the entirety of the roofing project, through to the roofing, um, it was supposed to be starting this week, um, I've been staying on top of them as much as I can. Um, had some issues here and there, but hopefully they'll start this week, um, if not, we'll cross that bridge.
Has he said anything about securing materials, uh, where they bought when they ordered?
He hasn't responded to me, so, I, we can maybe chat about that later, um.
Okay. Okay.
The next one down there, um, the streets section, um, that covers, there was a an invoice last year that I got for a little over a grand from Krueger Bros. that I didn't have put in. It kinda lapsed into the next year, got it a little late, so I didn't have it into the budget last year, so this'll just cover that, um, and the additional portion of that was for the used dump truck. Um, next on the line there is baseball general, that's covering scoreboards. Uh, that were decided to be purchased this year, parks, or all the mowers, uh, that we decided on last year, but we waited, we didn't put it in the budget, we wanted to see if we could get some different quotes and we didn't get anything different other than Wildcats, so. That's what that is, and then that final piece on there, um, is the purchase of the lawnmower for the airport, uh, through arts.
Okay.
Um, source of funding below, as I specified with the top one there, that's the funding we received from S D P A A for the roofs. Uh, next one down there, that's what we allotted this year for the painting of this building, however, um, we didn't receive any bids for that. Uh, so, that money just kinda sitting there, so that would roll into one of these, and then also the last piece there would be the unsigned fund balance, essentially just cash applied that we hadn't put into the budget for this year. Um, I didn't conclude contingency, I like to hold the contingency on there, um, contingency transfers can be done with a simple motion, um. I like having, I mean, if something happens at the end of the year, I like having that fifty thousand, just, you know, I don't have to try to push through a supplemental ordinance with two readings, um, it kinda gives us that security then at the end. Um, but that kind of explains everything there, um, and like I said, there are probably impossi- I mean, I guess they probably, I would say possibly, down the pike, another one coming, um. But it really just depends on how costs go for the rest of the year, so.
So, so the, like, the approved items that were on the budget, that was before I came on, um, and approval of the budgets. So, what established their beginning budgets?
Trending years, usually from the past three years, based upon trending based, and I trended it and I also asked for requests as well, so anything additional on top of that. Um, would be based upon request, Todd typically, like, for exa- I'll use Todd for an example, um, he'll come, he'll come to me and say, you know, I need, I don't need as much as last year, dial it back. Or, you know, I need the exact same, um, similar to that nature, it's all just based upon years past trending.
So then.
And future knowing, you know, if we have something coming down the pike, um, but most of it's just based upon trend.
Did each department submit a budget proposal?
Um, not really, um, I reach out to my group, essentially, I think actually I throw it to you guys too, and I just ask for budget requests and then I form them into a large sheet, divvy it out into several sections. I've never moved forward asking for an official budget request, um, like a, a proposal per se from from them, um, just.
I don't want.
I didn't wanna recreate a different wheel when I stepped on, I just kinda carried on as 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 things.
Could we've always had the deal where what we would've maybe want or maybe.
Right, I just kinda ran from that, where I, yeah, where I I have a list of things that are requested, whether or not, and then I'll, I'll preload it into the budget.
New things. But it's.
And then I'll let you guys pull it back, um, some things I'll just kinda leave as a, you know, possibility, um, which is kinda what happened with the mowers. It was a possibility last year, we didn't have any solid figures moving forward, I didn't put into the budget knowing that likely I would supplement mid-year if we'd be moving forward. Again, I'm always open to different approaches as well depending on the needs of the council.
Yeah, it will.
Or the wants, I should say, wants, needs, whatever you want.
Well, the main reason I'm asking for is, uh, because of the wastewater project coming up, and you know, when we, when we did those bids. Or didn't do those bids, we approved it and we approved the meeting, uh, for change of the rate schedules in which when then we can start drawing down from the loan. Do we need two passages of the supplemental appropriations based on what this balance looks like to move from general or another department to wastewater?
S- let me. I'm trying to gather that question, so are you asking, like, how how do we move forward, like, if we needed to transfer into a?
If we needed to do a transfer from one, a general to wastewater?
So, fun fact, uh, proprietary funds, enterprise funds, operators' businesses, they can operate at a loss, so you don't really necess- you budget for them, but you don't need to supplement if if you don't.
Right. Yeah.
It's never, historically, it's never been in since from what I've seen, um, they don't really, I mean, s- they supplement with the general and some of the other ones, but those proprietary funds, they just kinda operate. As some years they go old, some years they go up, every year electric goes up.
It's just as long as we're black. Or a hundred thousand, cause that's the amount we want to to ma- maintain it.
Um.
Cause I don't wanna be, you know, and we kinda touched on this when we voted on that other ordinance, um, about, you know, making sure that wastewater, um. Didn't run out of money and when when he mentioned tonight that they're already starting, uh, part of the design, which this before when they said they were gonna start the design in December.
And I will, okay, so on a different note, outside of supplementals, I also do cash fund transfers, which would be a general ledger transfers, which would, that number that you're seeing with the cash, that would bolster up their, the worth of their department.
Yeah.
Cash fund transfers is what I do for like, um, like if I'm moving sales tax revenue or something from like the electric side of it, or like electric revenue, then I'll pull that into the debt service fund. Or general fund to supplement any costs that happened in there, that'd be a little different than a supplemental allocation, but.
Yeah, fifty nine thousand, that doesn't. Care about fifty nine thousand dollars in this conversation, but like, um, the electric and the general. When we, when I made, when made the recommendation to change it to February first instead of the January first with the assumption that their design work was gonna start in December. Uh, that's why I made that recommendation or request, so if we can't utilize other departments to cover the bills for wastewater. Until we can re- be reimbursed for that, then that changes. My entire thought.
So if we have to start paying by eight or whoever, where would that money come from as well?
Currently?
Yeah.
It would, it would likely come from that wastewater budget.
Well. Okay. But you could supplement by after.
Well, you don't necessarily need to, I mean, I am open to doing it, you can do it, it's just not.
We could just make it go red and just tell him he has the money to use it.
Essentially.
Okay.
That year and then next year moving forward, we've had a couple of issues, like with this pump's going out and everything, I mean, some years they go a little red.
Yeah, cause like a.
In the past two years, these went red, actually.
A million bucks is what their proposal was.
Um, but no, we would.
But that was the entire ask, but four hundred thousand, I think was the the before construction started.
But worst case scenario, I can.
But I don't wanna run them dry, I think that was the the problem.
No, and we wouldn't run them dri- I mean, ultimately, I don't wanna see a zero budget anyway, so I'd probably just push forward something to move it back into, I I wouldn't let it get into that anyway, um.
Yeah.
But, no, I, took me a little bit to get what you're putting down, now I now I understand, um. But no, I, it wouldn't run dry, they can run, uh, I mean, I guess as a business, they need to.
Cause then that way, you know, we need to, we'd have to figure out who's where with regards to the budgets, so who's getting paid out or what?
Right. And ultimately, the worth of these, you know, it sounds a little high, but the worth of these businesses is kind of your discretion as well. I mean, let's say a common business is the electric water, I mean, you you can decide the word, you could probably, the, their fund balance. I mean, isn't necessarily their own revenue, you know, I mean.
So, the revenue, like specifically like baseball field or whatever, the baseball and the the swimming pool, the the tickets and all the fees that are associated with that, are are they associated with their budget?
It's kind of.
Or is there the taxpayer taxpayer dollar that develops this budget?
They're they're. So for the bat, for the baseball specifically, baseball is partially ran by their own revenue, but I would say half of it is is taxpayer ones. Uh, they go in the hole every year, they're supplemented.
And like the swimming, we we know recreation is is generating.
Yeah, swimming, swimming swimming pool, baseball, um. This is, yeah, th- th- they're not paying for themselves. By any means, not even close.
Just talking about.
For example, the pool went sixty thousand in the hole last year. So.
And the sixty thousand was associated with.
That sixty thousand, that that others, the sixty thousand that we used to make that hole was sixty thousand that was either budgeted in other areas in the general fund or supplemented from cash in hand.
Should they include any, like, when it's sixty thousand in the red, will does that include any taxpayer dollars to start with, or is that just estimated revenue that they provide?
Um, it ver- I would have to look at their estimated, their actual estimated revenue, but it, I'm I'm most of swimming pool and it would say at least half of my dollars taxpayer.
Are you asking if they went sixty thousand in the hole?
In the hole from their own revenue.
In the hole over their budget? Yeah. So did they go?
They're going in the hole regardless of what the budget was.
No. No, but then if you budgeted then.
No, no, there's two things, there's budget and there's revenue and expenses.
What are, okay, what are we saying? They don't pull in enough revenue.
Whatever.
No, if we, how much did we budget for them, did we go over our budget, is what he's saying.
Yeah.
Like, if we budgeted sixty thousand dollars in chemicals and all the other expenses or whatever it was, did we go over that budget?
Who?
Did we go? Sometimes we do and then we supplement, there's been times where like the pool chemicals are going over budget.
But like the sixty thousand dollars, when you said that they were in the red last year.
That's just expense versus revenue rate, is what you're saying, okay.
Right.
So, okay, and that's, yeah, what I'm trying to think.
But it was still within the budget, you budgeted for them to be in the red by sixty thousand, yeah.
Or somewhere close.
Right, no, they did not, yeah, yes, there we go, yeah, I budgeted them for to to go in the hole.
Yeah, that that's.
Yeah.
Cause that's. My, I guess, questions, you know, just like the baseball or softball conversations that will continue to come along.
No, all the, essentially all the rec budgets, I mean, aside from the skating rink, I mean, that one doesn't really gain us or loses anything, um, actually probably loses us more revenue because of the water consumption that it takes to fill it, um.
More revenue.
But yeah, they're they're all budgeted at essentially at a loss.
Okay. I have nothing for the questions.
I rest your honor.
All right, we need a motion to approve the first reading.
Yeah, there you go, I was just gonna say that.
I'll make the first motion to approve ordinance number seven ninety.
Jason made the first motion, come.
I'll second that.
Brian seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, say aye, motion's carried. Item seven, our June finance report, would you like, uh, take a look at that, please?
Did add the I C S sweep on top there, um, just to clarify, I know it probably doesn't matter, but it says ninety nine thousand nine hundred and ninety. We had a N S F that pulled ten off of there at the end of the year, or at the end of the year, at the end of the month, so it's it's a hundred thousand, but their system recorded that ten dollar pull at the end of the month.
Don't sweat the ten bucks.
They don't sweat the ten bucks.
I was just sweating the sweating the process because it didn't work out as well.
And the positive pay system's been great, yeah, to get on the phone on the weekends sometimes, but it's not too big of a deal, for the sa- for the safety of, you know, possible fraud and not having that go through, cool, that, so.
You can see the wastewater's making a little more money.
What's that?
You can definitely tell the wastewater. Big difference from last year to this year.
Which regardless of the project, wasn't needed.
Regardless of the project, it was needed, yes.
We were very, 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 I mean, we were bottom of the barrel when I come to wastewater jerseys.
Yeah. Everybody needs their toilet flush, yeah.
And we did it at a good time, cause he had a lot of maintenance coming up that he didn't know was coming, that's for sure, I think he just had the, one pump just went out, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just like told him that one, I'm on a pop of Kroger's, and then they had to replace that.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Again?
Yeah, that one just went out, the Krueger pump, but he said that pump's been good for, it was a ten year pump, and said at least, uh, just pumping.
Long time. Oh, it was a.
Yeah, cause.
He's had a lot of pumping.
So we've got, I looked at my bill for the first time since I moved here, I think, uh. So we've got two, uh, extra charges for water.
Yeah.
So twenty two bucks a month are extra surcharges.
Eleven fifteen, seven eighty five.
Okay, maybe eighteen bucks a month, I was thinking.
Seven eighty five is the one that I was saying has such a low balance level, compared to what it would have.
Yeah, I just feel like most people.
One more bill, okay.
Yeah, the nice thing about me, I'm not a fixed budget.
But it, yeah, I will say that, the big, the good Lord, that, uh, most of us aren't supposed to, uh.
Expose water usage is way down.
Hey, you're lying. Well, it's like fixed, fixed, but I.
Well, there, there, it's, it maybe sometime to be, so much a fixed budget is, it wants it needs to change.
That's for sure.
It wants to be.
You don't have a whole lot left in the family crisis budget, are you gonna move some over?
Family crisis is funded by the.
Churches or?
Churches.
Okay.
Um, so. I'm looking at the, uh, you're looking at the ninety eight hundred, it kinda floats around there, it'll get reimbursed, bumped back up, drawn back down, uh. Ministry ministries are usually pretty good about reimbursement. We used to get other sources of revenue with that too, like Dennis Taylor's, supply to that, but I don't know if we're using that anymore, ours.
Yeah. Somebody else steps out, huh?
It's a, it's definitely a a utilize, I mean, it's overutilized, it's a nice thing to have, I I hope we don't lose it. Definitely be put up.
Mm-hmm. Uh, she kinda went the water, give us the.
Uh, she kinda went to water usage this year, differences versus last year.
Get a little sleepy, I guess, I do what's up for it.
Water usage.
Yeah.
Get sleepy.
Retract that, I suppose they do somewhere.
I, uh, I can probably do it on time, I can see heavy hitters to see how they're doing.
See if there's still water.
Yeah, I can tell, I, I can tell you what they use yesterday by the hour.
Some probably, some probably continue to water no matter what.
I can tell you, yeah, they might, I mean, if they have irrigation systems and it just happens automatically, um, every day or whenever, maybe.
I'll make a motion to approve the June finance report.
Ryan made the first motion to approve the June finance report.
I'll second it.
Mike seconded it, all in favor say aye.
I figured that was your mic, but I couldn't tell with the yawn in my head, it's like, what's happening?
All opposed.
Yeah. So, is that Mike?
All opposed, nay, motion's carried. Uh, item eight is our minutes from July eighth, if you would like to look at those, please, see if we have anything we need to correct or change. I, I, you know, for this one, we should remind you that day, so, if you can, make sure prior to that, that everybody's here on that night.
Electric meters, yeah.
Yeah. Gotta try that.
Hopefully that one doesn't go like this.
Have, have everybody here on some nights where we have some important stuff, if, if possible.
How we doing with Mike Olson? On, have we had a budget with him, basically?
Uh, we surpassed our contract.
Did we?
Um, I think he just submitted a bill, last bill's list for like eight hundred.
Yeah, I saw that, I was just wondering if, oh.
We're, we're, we're fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have, I don't know how much is in that budget right off the top of my head, but I.
It's worth it, I mean, for what he does.
Yeah, it's cushioned enough.
Yeah, okay.
I assume we'd probably go over again, that budget will probably shrink as years move on, cause hopefully we won't need it to the extent, but it is, it is a good benefit to have, so.
You get the. I'll make a motion to approve July eight minutes.
Ryan made the first motion to approve the minutes from July eight, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Jason seconded it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, motion carried. Item nine is our, uh, bills, if you'd like to look at those, please. Oh, thank goodness you don't have any on the back.
Hey, you can, you can, uh.
I'm on the short, the short one here.
On the phone. You can thank last week's meeting.
I was gonna say, that's, I'm pretty.
I have last week. Imagine how long this one would've been if you wouldn't have last week's meeting. Three page bill's list.
Where's she going?
Thunder's stuffed away.
I was gonna say, where are you going?
You can't talk bad about her yet.
Who's gonna put the camera away?
That's right, keep her head up.
Hmm?
So, you can't talk bad about her yet, but that, like, your culture, you got the volume on.
They hear that, they hear that. Well, usually she don't get up and move until she's ready to.
Well, usually you guys kick me out at a certain point, and I don't think that quick.
We do, yep, we do, we do.
Scared me earlier.
Yeah, that, that point's getting closer, real close here.
Got a lot of bills.
We just got bills for hats?
Yeah, um, that would be the Legion, junior Legion uniform hats, um, that'll be paid for by revenue, I'm waiting for the revenue. Was that upsell, like, those hats back there?
Oh, that, or reselling, not for the, the actual, the leaving.
Yeah. No, no, it's reselling, um, I'm still, like I said, uh, waiting for revenue after asking several times for it, so.
Okay, well, it's, 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 it's odd to me that if it was for the hats that were purchased in May or April.
I just wanted to bring that up. They were purchased in May, for the season.
But those weren't for the, the actual individuals that have paid to participate.
It was, they were Legion, junior Legion uniform hats that we already had, but we were submitting the bill waiting for the revenue, but I wasn't gonna wait any longer.
That we had for resale, not for the participants.
Resale during the uniform, it was part of the uni- it was part of the uniform, I think it was part of the.
So, that was just a, a thought process to try to generate revenue or give to the community versus them buying directly to the, from the designer?
We bought the, I suppose we buy the hats when we have dogs and we upsell them.
And these are players?
Yeah.
Well, I thought they were these.
Well, I was just using those as a reference, like, simply.
So, these are the ones that the players were just paying for the bill that, for the players.
Yes. Yes, because we were waiting for, I was waiting to receive the revenue from the individual that was responsible for giving me the, yeah, and I haven't received it yet.
We don't have the individuals that are paid for this stuff.
I have not received, I have not received the revenue from that yet, and I've asked several times, and been told that it was wanting to be dropped off at the office, and I've still yet to see it.
What was that?
So.
Doug, what's the Heartland with, and pub- publishing fees?
Oh, jeez, uh, that wouldn't be publishing fees, that would be, I, I must've pressed enter not tab, that's, uh, that's garbage hauling.
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't even catch it.
What was it, that far down yet?
Publishing fees, uh, you got, you got, you got.
Good call.
I saw Heartland over here, but I did not see that publishing.
Yeah, when you press enter and not tab, yeah, it goes right down, I don't know.
Sure, yeah, yeah, the garbage fees.
Good catch. Like that's in the, yes.
I thought that was a deal, I.
Dang, Heartland, I didn't know you were a newspaper.
I was just, but, I don't get this here.
I think it's even better, I guess, Mike, it wasn't billed till the end of May, it was like early June, end of May bill, but still, if you shouldn't.
Yeah, it's, it's just trying to, I think that will be part of the next conversations, whenever that comes up towards the end of the season, to have staff come in. Or maybe not, but.
Yeah, maybe we can talk about that. But they recharge, do they pay online for their, to pay to, for their yearly? To play baseball, they have to pay their fee.
You can play on, you can pay online.
So, they've all paid their fee for the year, right? So, if they get hats every year, it should almost, a little let in on that fee.
I think it's a part of the.
They all do, they own the space above.
Oh, okay.
They own the space above.
And he was in charge of, he was in charge of handing them out and retaining the revenue, I think it is, getting us the revenue.
Gotcha.
Cool.
Any questions on our bills, people?
I had a motion to approve the bill with the publishing fees changed to garbage fees for Heartland was managing.
I'll second that.
I made the first motion with the change, the, the correction we made, and John seconded it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, motion's carried, it's nine nineteen, and, uh, we're gonna go into executive session, uh, session personal, and we go one dash twenty-five dash two, currencies one and three. I need a motion for that.
I'll make the first motion.
Jason made the first motion.
I'll make the second motion.
Mike made the second motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, motion.